It's always been at 5:30.
It is 5:30. I'd like to call this work session of the College Place City Council to order. It is a work session. No decisions will be made this evening. This is for information only for the city council to help to consider items in the future. If we could stand for a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a moment to silence, to center ourselves before this starts. Thank you all very much. This evening, we have three items on our workshop. A legislative update from Brian Enslo, our lobbyist, with this keeping us in touch with what's going on with the state. Presentation on stormwater utility and a presentation on a proposed ambulance utility. Mr. Enslo, Brian Enslo, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Brian Enslo. I am your lobbyist. I have the privilege of representing the city this legislative session. And more than anything, really wanted to provide an opportunity for us to kind of learn a little bit more about my background, for me to give you some summary highlights of this past session, and then talk about maybe what we see happening moving forward in the future. So we can go ahead and just go to the next slide. So, like I said, what we're going to talk about, maybe a little bit about me, agenda, results, some insights. And I always say questions, comments later, but really, anytime you want to interject, any questions you have, drop that in. Go ahead. So, my first job after college was answering phones at the governor's office. And I've worked for the legislature. I've worked for a couple different executives. I've worked for the Washington State Association of Counties for eight years. I feel very strongly about service and connection to the public. It's a big part of my business model. I've been in business for myself for about two years, but when I think about who are the clients I want to represent that want to be a part of that services, it really pulled my enthusiasm. It's one of the reasons why I really enjoy representing and representing yourself. At a level, a fundamental level, when I go talk to your delegation, right, there's always this value that I've been tied back to. And it's the value that you serve the same citizens that they serve. You're elected by the same citizens that they're elected by. And although you might disagree with your delegation about how things have done, you're all just trying to do the math. So, that's really something that means a lot to me. It makes it a really rewarding experience to represent yourself. As I mentioned, worked for the Association of Counties for eight years. Worked for the Locke administration. Worked for the Gregoire administration as a budget writer. Also worked for the House of Appropriations as a budget writer. So I've kind of worked in Olympia now for nearly 20 years. I have an executive perspective, a legislative perspective, and I've worked on working government. So, that's kind of about me. If you have any other questions about my background, I'd love to answer it. No? All right. That's it for the next slide. Washington State has binary cycle. This was a short session. Normally during a short session, you kind of have a continuation of maybe larger thorny policy issues that didn't get resolved last year. In this case, those things would be Hearst. They would be, which is the water law case. Feel free to nod or one way or another if I want to go slow or fast, depending on what I'm seeing, okay? And/or McClary, which of course was the education fund. There's still some things hanging up there. This year was really unique in that you had a majority change in the Senate, which doesn't usually happen on off-election cycles. So, you had a member of the Senate pass away, which was unfortunate. There was a special election to fill that on its prior term. There was a Republican. The Republicans lost that seat. There was a Democrat. And now all of a sudden, you have a Democrat in the governor's office, Democrat in the House, and Democratic Senate. So, instead of having a balanced government, which I think personally is best for local government, because I think local government is pragmatic, local government is implementers, that pothole is not partisan. It just needs to be filled, right? So I think when there's balanced government, I think government does, local governments do well. When it's one party or another, I think we're vulnerable to that kind of situation. In this case, what we saw was a very progressive agenda and lots of new policy issues that came forward. So, we had to resolve McClary. We had to resolve Hearst. We had the situation where you had the shift in the majority and all of that detail. Can you go to the next slide, please? So that's the context in which we're operating. We worked very hard to support the capital budget. As you know, in the underlying budget, there was $900,000 for the placement of well number one. So, and that was being contingent on Hearst. The other thing that we worked on, and your city manager was excellent in that case, was to get something ginned up and ready in the event that there might be an opportunity for a supplemental budget. It happened in a little bit different way than I thought. Often in supplemental sessions, they might do a new bond bill based on available resources and things like that. They might actually do. In this case, because of Hearst, they had some extra capacity in the existing bond bill because of the delayed start time in capital projects, right? They said, "We're going to fund this many projects, and we're going to fund 24 months of them." Well, they didn't get Hearst done until January. They didn't get capital budget done until January. So they only had 18 months of projects that they needed to fund. So, created some extra capacity. You as a city, and we were there to jump in right with that well number two, really told the story of how it was emergent, public safety, public health issue. And your delegation did a great job. Very collaborative delegation. Worked on this with the laser focus and made sure it was in there. So, fantastic. You also work closely with the Association of Washington Cities, support their agenda. Yes?
I'm sorry. I've never quite understood the Hearst issue.
Sure.
Can you give me the TLDR of what they actually decided?
Okay. So, permit exempt wells. And who is responsible for deciding whether there was available water? The case that came out of Locke and said it's no longer a state responsibility, it's going to be a local responsibility to meet the challenge. Okay? So, the big piece on the Hearst case was that went back to being state responsibility. And then the other big piece was how much water you draw, which had been, I'm not, like 3,000 gallons per day.
That sounds right.
And then the compromise was 950. There's all sorts of caveats around that, depending on what basin you are and how it plays in. And you have an excellent staff here in Plank Park. We can partly specifically how it applies here. One of the pieces that is maybe of more interest too is there was this other case called Foster that came out of Thurston County, which was how do you find mitigation? And can you use off-site places to then mitigate water impacts and find water resources that way? And this legislation had a pathway forward for those projects as well.
Good.
And created a pathway for that. So, it was good all around, I think. For local government, I think it was a good compromise. I think we got a better deal than we could have expected. Great question. Thank you. And as always, I'm there. I'm monitoring. I'm looking to be flexible. I'm looking for opportunities. We're communicating on a weekly, if not daily basis, if sessions going on, depending on the issue. So, okay. The next one?
I'm sorry.
No, have I covered that? No, it's good. So there's your Hearst piece. There's what was in the capital budget. We know that there's still going to be more projects going forward. I had a great opportunity today to spend the afternoon with your staff. Got to see the city and a lot of the great opportunities that are happening here, also some of the challenges, thinking about some other things that we might need some state assistance on. So that was good. Okay, can we go? Homelessness is a problem in all communities. It's obviously becoming a bigger issue here locally. It's been very frustrating. There's a lot of smart people working on it, not coming up with great solutions or fantasies. This from a policy standpoint here, there was, what I think, some really great strides forward. There was a piece of legislation that basically said landlord can't discriminate based on source of income. So if there's a state support or a local voucher that's providing resources for an individual, that can't like put them lower in priority. I don't want to get too wonky into this next one, but if you're interested, let me know. But basically, for disabled individuals, depending on whether it's temporary disability or permanent disability, there's different pots of money. And this kind of resolves this and fixes it and gets rid of the disincentive in the system. And the document recording fee was made permanent, was extended, and creates lots of additional resources for this region.
Could you elaborate a little bit on what the document recording fee is?
So, specifically what it is, is under current law going into session, it was roughly a $50 charge on every title transaction that was recorded at the county. So, it's not just when land transfers, but if you change the laws and other things. So, that charge was to support homeless services. It was set to sunset in four years. What this legislation did was remove the sunset and then move that charge on recording documents from $50 and bumped it up $22 of which the majority will stay locally. It's administered by the county, but you see the benefits here locally as well.
Excuse me?
Sure.
Does that have any inflation component, or will it just stay 72 until they go back to fix it?
No, it stays fixed. It's not something like title insurance that's based on the value of the property. It's a fixed rate. The inflation would be down with the volume. If you have more housing units, more volume would generate an increase, but for the most part, it's going to stay flat. Yeah. Yeah, good question. We didn't get very far in economic development. And arguably, it wasn't a short session. It wasn't a session for it. It wasn't a priority. There was really kind of a lack of vision, lack of impetus. The economy cooking and Puget Sound is arguably good for the state, but definitely, we feel the impacts differently. And so, I think sometimes when the economy's going really well in Puget Sound, they lose sight of the pressing need to continue to see economic development in other areas. And so, how do we have this one Washington concept when the state's looking at a $3 billion surplus and people on Amazon? Okay. You know, the analogy I use in a lot of my presentations, and, you know, the Puget Sound, Puget Sound drinks, we get the hangover, right? We get the rising home costs. We get the inflation. We get homelessness. We get other things, but not necessarily the resources, the economic growth. So, those are the things we need to think about as we move forward, kind of these policies. So, can we go to the next slide?
Maybe you can convince them that economic growth over here would help slow down housing prices over there.
It's a very reasonable argument, and that's sometimes difficult.
Yeah.
Makes too much sense, right? So, one of the things I wanted to point out is there's been a 15% increase in general state, what state general fund level. And that's mostly driven by sales tax, right? New homes, housing starts, sales tax, mostly. That's not sustainable. It's been 40% increase in the actual size of the budget, in actual spending, since 2009, 2010. So we're now, the state is now spending $45 billion for every two years in cash. And that's 40% up what they were doing about a decade ago. That's not sustainable. And I don't, I'm not criticizing the forecast. The forecast is conservative. The state forecast, it's like, the forecaster said, "Okay, here's what actual collections are. I'm going to say it's, well, here's what actual collections are. I'm going to say the forecast is this." But this, over a decade, you know, year over year, is still not what we really think is going to happen or has happened historically. So, and the reason why I bring that up is the relationship between local government and state government is at a little bit of a détente right now because there's money in the bank at the state. But as we remember during the Great Recession, you know, when the water starts to dry up around the water, and we look at the other animals a little differently, right? And the state started shifting responsibilities down to locals, started making, you know, wanting to pass policy but not wanting to pass the funding. Those types of issues start to arise when, you know, you have budget instability. So that's something to watch. Like, we don't, you know, we know there's going to be a market downturn. Maybe we're already starting it. Maybe we're not. Maybe it's six months from now. You know, I couldn't tell you. I'm not an economist, but I do know, like, it's inevitable. And so that's something to watch. And that budget that's been passed is, it's balanced. It makes sense. There's nothing wrong with it, but it's somewhat, it's unsustainable in the long-term sense. So, that's something to think about in that relationship. Capital budget, we're at the Epicentum, McClary. Levis are passing. It's a very good environment statewide. The single biggest appropriation in the capital budget is the school matching. The capital budget's roughly $4.6 billion. Don't quote me on that. The state match on school construction is 1.8 of that. So, as we're moving through this, the bond model looks pretty good. Spending's going up. There's capacity there, but a lot of that's been beaten out by school construction. And that's going to be the case for the next couple of years. So when we think about how we compete and what resources are available for what we're doing broadly, whether it's through the Public Records Trust Fund, whether it's through Curr, whether it's through MACA, I'm using the acronyms because sometimes it's, sometimes I don't.
Yeah, I beat the staff up when we use that acronym.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that.
Some of them, some of us know the acronyms better than the actual.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I thought the long and short of it is, when you think about the infrastructure tools that are available in the capital budget, whether it's just directly community projects or other things for stormwater or for pipes and things like that, there's a fair amount of competition for that right now because of that big wave of school construction. And that's really the take-home that I wanted to have. This was a really hard session. And you, as I mentioned and alluded to just before, there was this backlog of a very progressive agenda. And I, you know, I don't have, it's not a value statement. I'm just reporting on what. So you had, you had things that really pushed at some core values of the Republican minorities, and they were left at the end of session feeling like they got ran over. The high-water mark for the minority was Hearst, which happened in mid-January. And then for the next month and a half, they got crushed on issues that were very hard for them. Reproductivity parity, gender reassignment, things of that nature. Difficult issues for them. And so it was a really contentious session. Did any of you follow the public records issue? This gentleman probably did here. So, the legislature, the press corps broadly brought a suit against the legislature saying, "You think you're subject to the Public Records Act the same way you all are?" The legislature said, "No." They lost in Superior Court. And then they decided to pass a bill to say, "No." We're the final word on this. Well, Governor vetoed that bill based on quite a bit of pressure, record volume, really good lobbying and effort on behalf of the press group. And that just caused the whole place to melt down. So they went home pretty unhappy. And it's going to take a while to patch that up together. And a lot of people retire. They're going to have a lot of shifts in majorities. So there's going to be a lot of sorting out. You're experiencing that here locally, right? Representative Newley has announced his retirement. So you've seen that happen here. Some other things are potentially inflexible as well. And election trends. So, right now, the Ds hold the Senate by the slimmest of majorities, 28-24. The Ds hold the House by the slimmest of majorities, 50-48. So, the numbers are very close, but the parties are getting further apart. And instead of having a traditional bell curve, right, where your two-thirds majority is right down the middle, it's a little bit inverted, where you have, you have a Democratic caucus, and I'm painting broad brushes here, that's really pretty liberal, and a Republican caucus that's really pretty conservative, instead moderates. And I think that's likely to continue. Arguably, that's a function of the top-two primary system. Maybe not. There's some debate about that, but I think that's likely to continue. So you continue to see those margins pretty close, but the caucus is kind of starting to get further and further apart. Last slide. This isn't the one where we added, okay. So, what we're looking at as we move forward, of course, is, I mentioned it earlier when we talked about giving some state help for infrastructure, looking at some additional tools for economic development, whether it's local taxing and financing, other financial tools to help fund that infrastructure and really develop this community in a way that you want to see it grow. Those are the things that the preliminary conversations I've had with Mike and continue to work with you over this in order to develop and have that platform ready next session. Great? All right. That's what I have for you. Thank you.
Are there going to be any legislative access days over the summer? I know in the past, they used to do that sometimes.
Specifically, I don't know. I think we can talk.
Typically, the only one that I'm aware of is either in January or February, the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Action Days. Since I've lived in Washington, I never experienced a summer one unless you were.
So maybe I misinterpreted specifically, but you know, your members are very active. They had a town hall yesterday. When I come to town, I try to meet with them. Have you had like a delegation breakfast in the past or things like that in November, December? Is that kind of what you're talking about, or?
Things like that are often, what I'm recalling is, it's been 10 years, but were like regional get-togethers?
Oh.
Where off-session, like in the summers and so forth, there would be like Central Washington or Eastern Washington where the representatives and senators would get together along with local government folks or lobbyists or whoever wanted to and kind of talk about issues coming up that were more regional in scope. I don't know who organized those.
Yeah, about the only thing similar to that, but it really didn't have the legislators at on it, AWC puts on this event called Small City Connectors that occur during the summer, where the small cities technically get together with AWC staff and the chairman speaker to discuss the issues. A lot of ones I've been to have, the legislators don't really show up to those. Terry did the woman date time. Yeah, it was a really wide one.
I was just wondering, because it's really difficult for me to get away during session usually, because that's when I'm teaching, so.
No, I understand that. No, for sure.
No, we certainly, but we certainly can ask them to come and chat with us as a group.
Great.
And since one of them lives in the city, we can.
Yeah, well, that's got its own sort of issues.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time. I know you have a full agenda, so.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, council members?
So, next on the agenda is our stormwater utility. Mr. Gordon has a worse voice than I do.
Can we actually swap?
Oh, of course we can actually swap. So next on the agenda is our ambulance utility.
So, my name is Peter Moy. I'm the principal at FCS Group. And we do a number of different types of fire studies. And doing ambulance utility rates is one of the things that we do. We've done them for almost every city that has them. And so, when we were asked to take a look at whether or not you should do and have an ambulance utility, we were asked to do the cost of service study. And so, we just can move to the next slide. So, one of the things that we'll talk about today is really just talk about the key elements of the legislation. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the legislation. Our whole sort of cost of service framework and some of the preliminary results, some of the key cost assumptions, as well as the cost of service and the rate calculations. And then we also did five-year forecast. And so, these are all sort of what we call preliminary results. And if there's some other scenario or something that you'd like to see us do, then we can certainly do them before we issue a final, a draft and a final report. And then the last thing we'll talk about is sort of what are you thinking, some of the policy issues. So, next slide. So, the legislature, way back probably like 14, 15 years ago, authorized city councils and actually subsequently regional fire authorities and other districts to be able to create what's called an ambulance utility. And that was a result of a lawsuit that happened over in Kennewick, which said, "You can't charge this, what we call this ambulance utility fee." And then what the legislature did is they said, "Hey, we need to fix that." And so, they passed this legislation. And so now, the cities are able to go back and charge this fee. However, when you do this, now you have to do a cost of service study. And one of the things that we, that's one of the things we do, you can't include capital costs for like a fire station or any facilities. You also have to define what we call availability cost, as well as what we call demand cost. And basically, the demand cost and the way we do it is anytime a staff member is called out on a call, we consider that time demand time. And anytime they're in the station waiting for calls, we assume that's availability. And as we get into it, we'll talk a little bit of how we go about doing that. The last thing that they did also, because as this legislation went through, they exempted Medicaid-eligible persons in nursing homes, as well as persons who would be on Medicaid, who are receiving all in-home services, except they're at home, but they're receiving some similar types of care. So, next slide. So, what we did is give you sort of a cost of service and sort of how we go about doing this. And this is the framework we operate from. We first say, "Here's what your total budget is." We use 2018's budget. And so, you're spending about $1.1 million. And then what we do is we start allocating all those different costs into what we call a fire bucket versus an EMS bucket. And so, like, all the fire marshal activities are on the fire side. And whenever a call is answered, that's a fire call, we take those costs and say, "That's a fire issue. That's a fire cost." And so, when we get down to it, what we ended up having is showing that basically there's about 50-50 split really, where the costs allocated to fire activities are about 535, 535,000. EMS is about 579,000. Now, one of the things that we do also then is when we take, say for example, a full-time firefighter, what we do is we say, "Okay, well, the time that that firefighter spends on a call for EMS, that's demand time. The time they spend on a fire call, that's the fire call or some other kind of emergency, but it's not necessarily an EMS call." And so, based on that ratio, we then say, "Well, okay, when we look at how often they're at work and what the hours they are, how many hours they spent doing..." and what the hours they are, how many hours they spent doing EMS calls versus fire calls, we take that time that they're at the station and split it up in the same proportion. So that's the, what we call the availability side. And what we did and ended up saying is that, well, when we take all the EMS calls, we found out that there's about $380,000 worth of costs that are associated with the availability side, as well as the demand side, on the, about 200,000 on the demand side. And so we have a sort of detailed sort of model that we do where we allocate different types of costs. And there's some costs, as you can see in the, in the legislation, that'll say, well, this has to go to demand. This can be availability and then there's some gray areas. Next slide. So one of, we made a lot of different assumptions. I won't go through all of this here. But again, salary benefits are fire prevention one, all of the fire. Again, we talked about how we allocate that time for the paid firefighters. For the volunteers, of which you have many, whenever they went out on a call, that was considered a demand cost. And we pay them, we assume that the stipend that they get paid is part of the demand cost. Because they're there, they don't necessarily get paid unless they go out on a call. We'd say, we said, there's really no availability time or cost to that, okay? And then we, again, we take all the total time and standby time, we talked a little bit about that. And administrative costs for like the fire chief, we sort of allocated based on maybe total incidents or, or other time, the amount of demand versus fire time versus EMS time. And equipment, again, you have a pretty straightforward idea about, you know, if it's a fire truck, obviously all the maintenance and everything for the fire truck is going to go to the fireside. Anything that deals with the ambulance, an ambulance is going to go onto the rescue and emergency aid side of the EMS. So when we put all that stuff together, what we got was, again, you see that it's a 380,000 for availability, 199,000 for a total of 579,000 cost for EMS services and ambulance services. What we then do is we say, okay, what are some of the revenues? And so for your city, you receive a part of an EMS levy of $290,000 that's budgeted. And so this is a choice that we made at least. We said, well, we'll put all that to availability. And then on all the transport revenue, working with the city of Walla Walla's fire department and getting all the reimbursements and the number of calls, one of the things we had to do was, because you don't transport and you plan on doing that transport, we had to take all the calls that you went on and then try and match those calls with a call from Walla Walla that took somebody for that same call and took them to the hospital in transport. So we tried to, and we have the transport times and things from Walla Walla's incident reports. Unfortunately, they're different numbers, but based on the time and everything else, we were able to come up with something. So we came up with the demand time. Now, out of that, you have about 1,000 EMS calls a year. And of that number, there's probably about 200 transports that the city of Walla Walla did. And of that 200 ones, out of the revenue that you receive for doing that transports, they received about 70,000. We were conservative on this, maybe one year, I think for 2016, it might have been 75 or closer to 80. But for our purposes, we're trying to be fairly conservative. So there's 70,000. So what we end up getting in the end, after we take out all the revenues, the, the transport revenues have to go, the law says they have to go against the demand cost. And so we've done that. And so now we have, in terms of demand cost, we, we have 129,000 of costs that we have to recover through our, our rates. And we have about 90,000 to recover through our rates for availability. Now again, if, at least in terms of EMS levy funds, you know, we could change that. We'll go into that a little bit later. Okay, so, well, what does it all look like? We worked with Sarah here on the, trying to figure out, well, what are the number of billing units? So we make some assumptions. So every single family home is a billing unit. A multi-apartment building would be, depending on the number of units in the apartment building, would be, each unit would be a billing unit. For every commercial business, we just assumed that the business was one billing unit. For all the public areas, so for a city, if you have five different sites, we consider each property a billing unit, okay? Because potentially you'd end up having to go there, it's just like your water bill. You know, if you have water going to here and you have water going to a park or something, you know, you're still going to end up paying. That's part of the utility aspect of it. And then the biggest thing is, is that for nursing homes, we take each bed and determine, and each bed is a billing unit. And so one of the things that you'll find, so, and then of that, we also did some research, the staff did some research, and we found out that of those nursing homes that are here, about 128 are fully paid by Medicaid. So again, the law says we can't charge those people and all the costs have to be picked up by the rest of the group, which is these regular billing units. Okay? All right, so one of the things that we also take a look at, because we have demand charges, is well, we're, who's, who's causing all the calls? And so when we took the call data, what we found was, well, about a third of the calls are coming from the nursing homes. And single families, about, you know, half the calls. And the rest are coming sort of from the various other places, the commercial side, the businesses, the streets and, you know, the publics, public agencies and multifamily. So one of the things that you have to do when we're talking about, how do we consider what to charge? How are we going to recover that, I think it was whatever the, on the demand side? How are we going to recover that 129,000 on the demand cost? Well, one of the ways we first do it is we take the, the demand cost and we split it up based on, on who's using the service. And so a third of the cost and a half of the cost of that 129,000 is going to the single family customer class. And in terms of the nursing home, they're getting roughly a third of that cost as part of their, their demand charge. Okay? Next slide. So as you can see, what happens is when we have the number of percentage billing units, one of the things that we did, you know, in the five-year forecast, we just wanted to show that in the end, we're, we're talking about, given what you know about development that's occurring in the city, you know, in 2019, when we started looking at the 2019 rates, there probably are going to be about 40 single-family homes coming online, as well as another 185, 180 multifamily billing units. Other than that, we assume basically there'd be about 1% growth in the billing units in the future. Next slide. So, oh. You go back, go forward, I guess. You're going backwards, I think. Next slide.
Sorry about that.
So I'm going to. There we go. So when we, when we calculate all of this, so one of the things that we do is, okay, so remember, we had that demand charge. Once we identify how much cost is associated with that, we then divide it by the number of billing units in that class. And so as you can see, what happens when we do that is because single family has a lot of units, their demand charge is $20 a year versus a nursing home, when you're talking about just the bed units, they're, they have a much smaller number of billing units, but they have like a third of the cost. And so you can see that their demand charge, in this case, would have been like 366, 100, 366 dollars a year. So what does that mean? Well, except for a single-family customer class, it might have more than one billing unit. So a nursing home, of which some of them are average maybe size about 80 and usually about half of them, half of those units are Medicaid. So if they had 40, 40 beds that we were charged, they'd end up paying 40 times 387, which means their annual cost would be almost $15,000. Yes?
I thought you said the nursing homes were about 100% Medicaid.
No, that's, this is fully paid Medicaid, yeah. So this is what we had, you know.
But on your earlier slide.
No, it said 128 were, and 100, if you go back, slide, one more. There's a, there's 117, there's a total of 245 units and 128 were Medicaid.
Because it said, what's that 100% then, 100% of Medicaid billing units?
Well, that, they, a nursing home has 100% of the billing, nursing, has 100% of the Medicaid billing units.
Oh, okay. Okay, I misinterpreted that, thank you.
That's okay. We can always make that clear. And so a multifamily apartment building in Toddras with 10 units would pay just 344, 345 dollars a year for their, for their units. Okay, so any, any questions so far? Yeah.
When, when you're allocating the costs, how did you handle the training? Is it based on how many trainings were fire or?
Well, we don't really have that, so we usually do it based on either the number of incidents or something like that, so it's more like an incremental cost. You know, we could do it that way if we knew how much training was going on and then we'd have to figure out how much time each training was. But for the most part, we assume that it's, you know, some sort of added cost on top of every incident or every F T U. Yeah?
So if I'm interpreting this correctly, I think it would be totally off here. If, you know, the business that's running a nursing home, you know, they'd get charged $15,000 a year. And they just get a bill for that then, or is this integrated in their property taxes? Or just how, how's that mechanism, through what mechanism are we billing them?
Well, for this, most places and our other clients, it comes on their utility bill. So however you bill, however often you bill it, that's how you end up doing it. You could do it, I'm not sure, we talked a little bit about the billing system. So, you know, if you bill every month, then you can do it every month. If you bill every two months for water or sewer, you know. The big thing is, is when, is to make sure you got all the billing units. And that was one of the things that we tried to make sure we had. There were some that might, you know, if you were, think we use water to start off with, but if you were sewer only, then, you know, we might have missed that. But I think we've caught most of it, so. Okay, next slide. So this is the five-year incident forecast. Again, it's basically about 1%, a year, so. And so you can see that the, the total's going up, but it's not going up dramatically. You know, you're talking for five years, maybe we're talking, going from about 80 more EMS calls compared to today into 2023. Now, as population grows some more, depending on what kind of population that is, it may grow a little bit faster. It just depends on what that population is. Next slide. So if you take the status quo, which is basically, we have all the people that are staffed today. And so one of the things that we looked at is, when we talked about the availability and demand, is that you usually have at least one firefighter, the chief and training officer now and a fire prevention officer, that's always here from like Monday through Friday, basically, you know, eight hours or so. And then everybody else is served by volunteers. Well, so that's sort of the scenario we go in. We, since we knew what, when the incidents occur and what day they occurred on, we could figure out, okay, was, if there was a, a call and it was during the day, on a weekday, then probably we had a fire, a paid firefighter plus one volunteer going out. In other cases, if it was on a holiday or the weekend, then we assume that it would be two volunteers instead of a paid firefighter. So if you look at this, again, this is status quo. The rates, you know, basically the costs are going up by inflation. And you can see the rates aren't increasing dramatically, you know, for the most part. I mean, they're still high relative, certainly for nursing homes. Again, that's basically because of the way the availability and EMS levy was allocated. So go to the next slide. So if you do, and I understand there's some thought about adding more full-time firefighters, paid firefighters. So if we did a scenario that said, we'll add one firefighter in 2019 and another in 2020, you can see that the rates start to jump up. So in 2019, if you're a single family, you're jumping from $41 to $57 a year. And then by 2020, you're jumping to $72, so you've almost doubled, doubled that cost. And again, part of it's because you've got fully paid firefighters now, that when they have availability time when they're waiting in the station, there's a real cost to that. Whereas on a volunteer, if they're not going out, at least the way we calculated the stipend, they weren't really getting paid, so there wasn't really an availability cost. Okay, so again, you can see that those rates start going up pretty good in the next two years between 19 and 20. Next slide.
I have a quick question. What was the, I guess, basis for, or justification for adding the two firefighters, you know, assumption here? Was that just like, you know, we presume we need this, or what was the justification for adding them?
I bet the city, it was a scenario that might happen during the budget period.
That was just a scenario to run through because one of the status quo, the other one was that basically as we would get into the basic life support business, should we go that route? Technically, we would maybe need more people, so at least that way there would be a full-time person around basically as often as possible to assist the volunteers. And then my, and then my bigger concern, because initially we were looking at that was, well, you need two people to do that. Well, that's fine and dandy, but my bigger concern there is I want to make sure hypothetically, if we were to do that, there was truly a need. So that was why in there, I was looking at if we did go that route to maybe add one, the one year, see how it goes. And then if you needed the other one, that was the numbers for that. So that was the premise behind.
Okay, thanks. The other thing too, that, that is also, that you should know is, all these rates are full cost. So that means all that 500, that total of 500,000 plus dollars is being picked up by these rates. And so, you know, minus the, you know, the EMS levy and whatever revenues you get from transporting. From a policy standpoint, that doesn't necessarily have to happen. I mean, you can use your general fund to offset that cost and keep those rates lower. That's, that's just, again, that's one of the policy questions that we would have. Just to give you an idea, you know, one way to reduce that, if you spread the EMS levy based on the ratio of demand cost and availability cost, then it would bring the rates down by quite, at least for the nursing homes and some of the others, it would bring the rates down a little bit. But it ends up that the single, the other, the rest of the customer classes end up picking up some of that extra cost the nursing homes would have paid because you're giving some of that EMS levy money to help offset overall demand cost. In comparison, we're asked to do some comparison. Now, you're, this is a status quo scenario. You know, you'd be down here on a monthly basis, you know, we're talking about 350 Richland. We are currently doing a cost of service study for Richland. I expect that this is going to get up there, close to what Kennewick and Pasco is going to be at in terms of full cost. So these are not necessarily totally at full cost. And Sunnyside is a much smaller city. One of the things that Sunnyside does in terms of the businesses that they have, instead of charging each commercial business just as one billing unit, one of the things they do, which is unique, is that they take the number of employees and then they divide by the, the house, average household size to get the number of billing units. So if you're a business that employs a lot of people, then when you divide that by whatever it is, three, three per, average household size, you might have, you know, say 30 billing units that you end up paying. So, so that's a different thing than happens in Sunnyside. And like I said, this is going to, they haven't done anything for 10 years on this in Richland. And Pasco and Kennewick, those are pretty current. We did cost of service studies, Kennewick probably about a year or so ago, and maybe two years in Pasco. And they started, originally they started when we did a research, a study for them in Pasco. And I think we started at $12 and they've raised it to 15 and that now. So they've increased some of their costs too. They're also going through some areas where they have a lot of, a lot more development. So.
And that 344, is that with the two additions?
No, that's a status quo.
Status quo, okay.
So I think if you were talking more like, it, it doesn't really change too much. If you, if you add the two staff, you know, by 2020, it would be, it would be more, it would almost double, it would be almost, well, it'd be like about $7 or so a month. So any other questions? Okay, next slide. So what are your real policy decisions? Well, first of all, should you establish an ambulance utility? Secondly, if yes, should the city set it at full cost recovery, which basically would be mirror some of these rates? Or should you, should you also, in terms of things, allocate some of that EMS levy funds to offset some of the demand costs, which is what we just talked about? If not at full cost recovery, how much general fund should be used to subsidize the cost of EMS and ambulance services? And how should the general fund be used to offset that? Should we put it in availability, should we put it in demand, or should we divide it between both? It's sort of really a policy question. Certainly, we could model and determine how each one impacts the rates. But in any event, if you do have an ambulance utility, obviously, any charges and rates you have is going to save some of the general, some of the general funds of money. Because right now you're fully funded at 1.1 million dollars with your general fund plus the EMS levy. Because right now, you're fully funded at $1.1 million with your general fund plus the EMS levy. And you also get those extra $70,000. But it costs you more to transport than actually get reimbursement. Mostly because most of the transports in this city are Medicaid or Medicare. So and right now, those rates have been very low. And there is a movement, there was a movement a couple sessions ago to raise what they call the GMT, which is the transport fee and allow people to charge more and get reimbursed more for Medicaid and Medicare transports. But anyway, this is the information that we have as of today. So if there's any kinds of, like I said, other types of scenarios or other questions you might have.
I was kind of curious, question too there, should the city set its ambulance utility rates at full cost recovery? Is that typical or pretty rare that cities do it that way, where they do the full cost recovery?
I would say it's probably, it's not, it's not typical that most places would do, try to do full cost. We just did one where they actually did that, and that was Ocean Shores. Now, they only have one fire station. They only have, they just finished off having a safer grant. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. So that allows, you get federal money and to support firefighters. And then I think like at the second year, you have to pay so much. And then after about three years, you have to decide whether you're going to keep them or not keep them. And one of the things that they have in Ocean Shores, I mean, you just don't have a lot of firefighters. You have maybe four on duty. And if you were to take away the safer people, which was like, they got like seven people that they ended up funding. So that would put them in a pretty precarious position. And they have a lot of concurrent calls. They get, one of their issues is they get lots of tourists. And so they're providing a bigger population than what really is there during, say, the winter time. And so if they have more than one call, one of the things we did was an analysis of how often do calls occur within 30 minutes of each other? And so one of the issues there is, you know, if you have four, that means you can at least keep, you could respond to two calls concurrently. If there's a third call, you're probably still going to be in trouble. But that's very typical of small communities that have, you know, limited fire departments and staff. So, yes?
So if I understood this correctly, the ambulance utility can't pay for ambulances because that would be capital?
No, we can pay for ambulances, can't pay for the fire stations.
Okay, so can't pay for the building, okay. So we could include, but we could include the ambulance recovery in, you know, the money that we're putting in all the time.
Yeah, for, you know, like those are replacement costs. You know, those can run up. I think you've got, from what I understand, the chief got a pretty good deal on the ambulance that you have.
Well, and now we've started, so this should be in the 2018 budget, which is what you use, right? That we have money every year going in towards, so that when we have to buy a new one, we'll have the money. So those replacement costs would be in there.
To replace the current one, but not to add a second one.
Right.
Typically with ambulances, you will need a second one in case the first one has an issue.
So that wouldn't be included in this?
So you usually should have, you should have a reserve. Otherwise, you'll have to end up calling, you'll have to call Walla Walla to come and help you out, so.
So another question on this is, do we need a different kind of ambulance for transport? Okay, thank you.
No, the one you have is designed for transport.
Yeah, I know when I got transported, I assume it was Walla Walla because it was quite a while ago. It was pretty bare bones. It was like being strapped in the back of a delivery truck. Which was fine because the issue was I was the only driver and I couldn't drive. So it seems like I have one more question that it's escaping me. Oh, so if, if we do the ambulance utility, then does that mean that we have to have our firefighters, et cetera, do a lot more in terms of like time sheets or something, tracking their time so that every year we rebalance? Or how does that happen?
No, usually, we don't do these studies every year. And so, and given the trend where you don't have a lot of, what you basically see is a year, the number of incidents that you have are fire relative to EMS are generally about the same. So once we do this, you may not have to do this. Now, if there was some big change in the incidents or the, or say, the residential makeup or the makeup, demographic makeup of your city, you know, it might be worth looking at again. But, you know, like I said, I was quite surprised to see that you had, you know, a third of the calls are going to nursing homes. Now, they're not all transported, but you're still going there. And I think they're pretty big, large homes. I mean, they're like, what, 80 beds or something like that, close to 80 beds average. And I understand there might be a newer kind of facility coming to town too, so. But, you know, for the most part, a lot of our clients, they don't always go full, full cost recovery. And like I said, Ocean Shores was just the recent one that actually decided to go full cost. And that was $19 a month, so.
Actually, I do have another question.
Sure.
So if we did not allocate the EMS levy funds to offset some of these costs?
Demand, demand cost, yeah.
Where, what can that fund, those funds be spent on?
Well, it's still in there. It just goes to the availability cost. It doesn't go to the demand cost.
Okay, so it can only go to?
It's still got to go to EMS services. It's just the law actually says you've got to figure out what share of the EMS levy should be paid for by, you know, should be paid for by the levy versus the utility rates. In this case, you know, a lot of places, you know, we just put that against availability. But in this case, given some of the financial impacts, it may be that, you know, you might want to change that. Like I said, that's really a policy decision.
Other questions?
My question.
So I have some questions. So I'd like to see a scenario where we kept our current expense contribution going to the, in the current dividing out between both EMS and fire. Because this assumes that all of those EMS costs are being supported by the utility. Am I correct?
Yeah, we're showing like your full cost recovery.
Yeah, full, full cost recovery. I'd like, I'd like to see the, the current, if we kept our current expense contribution going there and we continued to add the two firefighters. And I'd also like to see the, the effect on the utility rates if we divided evenly between both availability and demand.
I can tell you now, because I've sort of done this. If you put the ratio of EMS levy towards the demand, that rate, it would reduce the nursing home charge from roughly over $300 to slightly over $100 per year. So it would dramatically impact.
So, but I'd like, I'd like to see those. I mean, we'd like to see the, we're not envisaging trying to save money by developing an ambulance utility for current expense. What we're trying to figure out is how do we make sure we pay for it all?
Yeah, so let me just get clarification on the, so if we, if you're spending $1.1 million now.
Right.
What you, if I understand you right, what you're saying is we still spend $1.1 million, but if we add the two firefighters, we would put those people on the, in the utility.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the same kind of, Chief, am I wandering off too far?
I'm just making sure I understand this well.
So we'd like to keep our current expense contribution, but use the utility to fund the expansion of the personnel. And divide the, divide the, those contributions for the EMS levy across both demand and availability.
Well, my, my thinking would be is that you will actually have more revenue because I'm not sure that, say, say the cost of the two firefighters is roughly, let's assume $200,000. And of that, maybe, let's say, 150 of it is for EMS. So if we only have $150,000, basically, your EMS levy pays for all that already. So I'm not sure, again, we'll, we'll run the numbers and let you see, we'll see what happens. And then I guess if we wanted to put in some sort of amount for another ambulance, that would be another, at least, you know, we'll have to advertise it because, you know, you're talking another 250, brand new, probably 250, $300,000.
Would you like a new ambulance, Chief?
Something.
Ms. Selby?
So if we were talking about potentially wanting a fully paid firefighter always available, it typically takes five shifts to cover 24/7.
It's a seven, if we want to cover 24/7, 365, it's seven people.
So how far off are we from that? Because I mean.
If we've got three full-time right now, possibly we can get another two.
But some of those full-time are on the day shift. I don't think we want our chief working nights, although you might like that because there'd be a lot less bureaucracy. But.
Frozen comments.
So I just wondered how many, and I don't expect that we have to have the answer tonight, but.
So if you're, so if you're looking to put somebody on 24/7, there's usually three shifts. So you'd have at least three people not counting days off that they are required via contract, vacation, sick leave and all that. The determination of the city would then be, do you backfill with another paid person? Or do you backfill with a volunteer? Or do you leave that shift empty? And that's a policy decision for you folks to make. Currently, I would prefer to keep the fire marshal on days. That's when businesses are open. I would prefer to keep the training officer on days or evenings so that he can see all the shifts and then myself. So that would be three people not on shift work. Currently, I have four people, so I would need to have two more to do the bare minimum, covering that 24/7. And then you folks would need to tell me how you might need to fill any gaps. Generally speaking, you know, it takes, for every 24/7 position, it takes anywhere from three and a half to as high as four and a half positions to fill one, one on-duty position.
Yeah, we always just use the rule of thumb of five.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if you have three people, that means you have, you're going to have to hire 15 people. You have three people on duty all the time.
Yeah, but we only wanted, needed one on duty all the time.
I'll take 15.
Well, and that's, that's why when we look at, you know, when you're talking about Kennewick and you talk about Pasco, I mean, every station has anywhere from three to four people full-time. So that's, that's why those numbers are quite a bit higher.
So I'm not really able to add small numbers tonight. So it sounds like we would need about four more, if I'm counting this correctly.
I would need two more as a bare minimum.
Well, to get to five on shift.
Five people per shift?
No, five people doing shift work, not you and the fire marshal. Need four more.
So.
So I'm adding better than I think.
So is that, is that something you want us to look at?
Where we don't cut back on our money, although it sounds like our money's all going to have to go to the fire side to cut and cover four more people. And they could be adding one every year.
In addition to the two added initial two.
I would like to see a scenario like that.
Okay.
Okay. I think I've got my marching orders. If there's anything else that you can think of afterwards, or like, hold it there, Sarah, Michael, and they'll email me and let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, is stormwater.
Hello, folks. Got an FCS doubleheader tonight. Cool. If you want to copy it.
Oh, I've got, I've got it live. So my name's Andy Baker. I'm a project manager with FCS Group. And I'm here to talk to you about the stormwater utility formation project that we're doing for you. We're working with Parametrics, who's your engineering consultant, on the stormwater management plan. And we've been also working closely with staff and with Robert, who's not here unfortunately. And if at any point you have questions for me, please feel free to jump in. So what we're, we're going to talk about, and I'm going to try and move this along at a reasonable clip. So if you want me to go into more detail, I'm happy to. I'd love to talk more about this stuff. But I do want to be respectful of the amount of time that we have today. So if you want me to go into more detail, let me know. So we're going to go over what are we talking about with a utility formation? What the overall process of the, of going through this rate study looks like. Probably sound a little bit similar, so I might be able to keep that abbreviated. What the key policy issues that we have evaluated, discussed with staff, and then brought a recommendation forward for you. What the revenue requirements look like for this new stormwater utility, our rate recommendation, and then what the next steps in this entire process are. All right, so the regulatory driver for why we're talking about stormwater utility tonight is that beginning in 2019, or maybe from what Mike told me today, based on a call from Ecology, maybe a little bit sooner than 2019, the city has required.
But, yeah. I should add a little.
Yeah, don't worry.
So when Robert called saying, yeah, there are guys that's issue, he also informed me that he ended up getting a call from Department of Ecology yesterday where they request a meeting with us to start following the National Fluid and Discharge Limitation System, MPDES permit.
Very good.
Nobody calls it that.
Yeah, because they want to put us under the order to get the stormwater going as soon as possible. So they are on us to get this established. Originally, we were under the interpretation that they were going to be a little more chilled about it. Maybe start them next year. However, from what was communicated with me, that does no longer sound like the case, so.
Well. Can I jump in a little?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to be.
And you are?
Angela Taylor with Parametrics. Sorry.
But why don't you step up then, so we can record?
Sorry about that. I guess I'll be a city staff. So I just wanted to jump in there. DOE wants to have College Place under the MPDES permit by July 2019 because the Walla Walla permit that you're under, it will expire. So we need to work through all the process and have it in place before July.
Well, they'd like us to.
Well, no, it'll be a requirement.
It's a negotiable requirement.
Well, actually, I, if our permit that we're under expires, it would be good for us to be under our permit. It gives us some regulatory cover. But that doesn't mean that all the requirements of the permit have to kick in on day one. We absolutely should negotiate a timeframe for the requirements to be kicking in.
And, and we'll be getting into this, but it's really a phase of approach. We're going to try and be a little more weight on the operation and maintenance side of it. And more so than construction and capital facilities and that sort of stuff. It'll be some issues.
That's right, yeah.
And that makes sense. And that makes sense. But even things like setting up the utility can be part of the permit. And so you can have a thing that says, okay, well, you've got a year after the permit starts to set up your utility. And then after you start collecting money, then you have more time to start doing the O and M. And then, trust me, I know all how people like to postpone things. I, I worked at Ecology Stormwater for many years. I was the one that oversaw the Eastern Washington Stormwater Manual. I was the one that oversaw the Eastern Washington Stormwater Manual.
Excellent.
The phase two permits, et cetera, so I'm familiar with stalling tactics.
Well, good, then, we won't spend any time talking about what each individual minimum requirement is, or any of that, because...
Remember, I did work there for a couple of years, so, remember, I kept a dump over here, so...
Well, and I left there nine years ago, so things have changed a bit.
Sure. So, the timeline on this, as you say, this is, the assumption that we are operating under is that we're aiming, or we have been aiming for being able to be ready to start billing people, have a functional stormwater utility January 1, 2019. That's the, what we're operating under for, in terms of our assumptions. As you say, it is a negotiated process, and that's, any leeway that comes along, great, but we want to make sure that you know what it would take to be able to do that on January 1. So, just very briefly, some of the benefits of having this set up as a separate utility, as a separate enterprise fund, is that it does mean that the stormwater program will be financially self-sufficient from the general fund, gives you more reliable revenues for these ongoing costs that you are, at some point, going to need to be incurring, and it also gives us the ability to more equitably recover those costs through rates that are tied to the cost of providing the service. And, as a bottom line, gives some transparency and accountability to the public of what is our stormwater cost, program cost, and how is it being paid for?
Every, or every city that we worked with that tried to avoid having a utility had never worked in the long run.
Yeah, no, it's, it's pretty much the status quo here. Either in other states, sure, but with, under ecology, that's, yeah. So, the process, there are two main areas where we dive into this. One is just setting up the policy framework under which the utility will operate, and this is, this is made up of fiscal policies, which are largely in line with your existing water and wastewater utilities, and then also some policies around how we design the rates, what we do in terms of credits. And then, on the rate analysis side, we looked at what do we think the operating costs will be, what capital costs do you have to support, and that develops what we call a revenue requirement. And then, we go through the process of designing the rate, and that's as far as we are for today, because this has not yet happened, and so we've not begun anything along the lines of outreach or implementation. So, move along. So, I said that the key policy issues that we evaluated were related fiscal, rate structure, and then rate credits. I have a little bit more detail on them in the next slide here. So, starting with fiscal policies, most of these, these are the key policies that we evaluated, discussed with staff, and then have a recommendation on. Most of these are in line with what you're doing with your water and wastewater utilities. The operating reserves, those are one-time initial amount of money that we want you to have on hand, and they're intended to cover cash flow throughout the course of a fiscal year, and any emergency costs that arise. It's not a annual amount of money that needs to be, it's being spent every year. We have a recommendation in here for our debt service coverage, that's really more there for the sake of completeness, because we are not recommending, capital funding recommendation, we're not recommending that in this planning period you plan to use debt to fund any of your capital projects. As a new utility, it would be premature, and so for the window that we're looking at, it's not a recommendation. We're recommending funding any capital with cash and grants. And then, system reinvestment is a, more of a target of, as a policy, what we want you to be working towards, is being able to fund reinvestment in your infrastructure through the rate. And we generally recommend not trying to get there all the way right immediately. This amount of money isn't tied directly to a capital project that your city engineer has identified as needing to happen in 2019. It's not tied immediately to your normal capital planning process. It's more from a rate philosophy standpoint, we want you to have a line item where you are setting money aside so that when you do identify projects, you have the cash to be able to pay for them, as opposed to having to go out and get debt. Yes?
How does our existing stormwater infrastructure fit into that?
So, in, so what we have, what we have done with your existing stormwater infrastructure is, well, I say we, Angela has gone through and calculated what the, if you had to replace it today, so what the current day replacement cost of all of your existing stormwater infrastructure, and we are then, in our recommendation, saying you should plan to fund a annual replacement cost of that, so it's not exactly depreciation, but essentially, if you were depreciating on, on the replacement cost, be able, so that you have enough money for when you actually do need to replace it.
Okay.
So that's the basis for that assumption, but it's more of a rate philosophy target, as opposed to saying, in 2020, we're gonna spend this exact amount.
Right, I just misunderstood you to say that it only applied to future...
No, no, it's, it's actually only based on, so the amount in our recommendation for 2019 is based off of what you have today.
Yeah, so what I did is I took an inventory, every catch basin, every manhole type, drywell, infiltration basins, and I tried to accommodate all of those and give a real world cost for now, like 2019, 2018, 19, or 2019.
Right, and then in our projection, we're taking that amount, and that's being scaled up based on construction cost inflation.
Right.
Our next slide is related, so the next major policy issue that we evaluated was related to rate structures, and I'm happy to go through all of these if you want, but I can tell you if you click once more, I think. So, where we ended up with is recommending an impervious area-based rate structure that uses equivalent service units, or ESUs, I'm trying to be good about those acronyms. That's the most common rate structure in the state, and there's a good reason for it. It's that it is the one that, for most cities, gets the right balance of rate equity, so it's based off of a real rate driver, the actual impervious area that folks have. It's an achievable level of data. When I say that it's based off of equivalent service units, or ESUs, what that means is that for every residential, single-family residential customer, we're just gonna treat them all as one, one unit, all pay the same rate. But it's for non-residential customers that we have a measurement of the actual amount of impervious area on their parcel, and their rate is going to be a multiplier or a function of how much impervious area they have relative to the average residential, single-family residential. Yes?
That is kind of a layman over here. Could you please define impervious area?
Yes, impervious area is roofs, parking strips, tennis courts, pools, I guess, maybe.
Sources of runoff, essentially.
Anything that's gonna generate runoff, that is...
It's basically the work surfaces working.
Yeah, so it's, but it includes both, both the roof surface and then also parking strips and all of that, and Angela can probably tell you more about the...
And even gravel is considered impervious, because the rate at which water, rainwater runoff at it is a faster rate, so we have to accommodate for that faster release of flow into the streams. Any hard surface.
Because when you're doing gravel, you compact it.
Yes.
So, I've been trying to convince my employer to switch to pervious paving for their parking lots.
That's the perfect segue.
There you go. So what would happen if I did that?
Yeah, well, so, the next policy issue that we considered is rate credits. For, so, for single-family, there are every single-family residential being treated the same, so this doesn't apply to them, but for everyone else, where we are really going to a high level of detail of figuring out exactly how much impervious area they have, the recommendation is that there would be a process for, if they do more than what is required, the bare minimum of what is required for onsite, that they would be eligible for a credit on their rate, because they're reducing the cost to provide the service to them. Now, it's not gonna be 100% credit, because when, the process that we go through is we go and we look at, if everyone did the maximum amount possible on their site, what costs would we still have to have as a utility? Because there are a lot of costs that are still gonna be there. You're not gonna, it's not gonna cost any less to do the street sweeping that you have to do, just because everyone's doing everything they need to onsite, all of the reporting requirements and outreach, and we'll get to the whole litany of minimum requirements shortly. Those are all still gonna be there, so, but there are a number of costs that will be reduced. Maybe if everyone was doing it onsite, maybe some of your, the sizing of your capital facilities could be smaller. And so we've gone through a process of looking at all of the costs that exist and making a recommendation for what the total amount of the credit should be. So let's go on to the next one here, and I do have all of those permit requirements pulled up here. Thank you.
So I just provided these for FCS. Basically, to comply with the 2019 stormwater permit that you will be under, you will have to complete the stormwater management plan, which we are currently in the process of completing. You'll also need to complete some public education and outreach, so that's going to be going and telling them about dog waste pickup, don't wash your car, and enough the runoff going to the storing grate, don't pour oil in the litter, and similar stuff like that, and just get people thinking about where the rain goes, where it travels, so you want to involve the public in that process. Participation in developing some of the strategies for doing the stormwater, and then also looking at illicit discharge. So if you have some cross-contamination between a sewer pipe and a stormpipe, you know, some of those would be considered illicit discharge, or if somebody did have a big spill and it got into the storm system. So you want to maintain a process of public outreach. If that does happen, you can call above Public Works Director or one of the maintenance guys. And then just how your operation and maintenance works, like where they're taking their street sweepings, how often are they cleaning up the catch basins, how often do they sweep in the streets, stuff like that is part of the operation, how you're dealing with fertilizer, stuff like that. And then, how you monitor all of those activities. And finally, construction sites, so anything that's over an acre gets a DOE and PDES permit that is related to that construction site. So the city would want to make sure that each project gets one of those permits, that they have a certified CSE on staff, and that they're maintaining those facilities, the E and Ps, so plans, catch basins, and lots, stuff like that during construction. And then finally, the city has to oversee DOE mineral environments for maintenance treatment and detention onsite, so make sure that the drainage report includes all the minimum DOE requirements. So that takes money just to do that.
Yeah, the takeaway there is that these are a lot of new things that you, this new utility, you as a city, are going to have to be able to have staffing to do. And the assumption that we have in here is that this is gonna take two additional maintenance workers to be able to support all of the, all of the monitoring, O and M requirements, illicit discharge and detention, all of those activities are going to take two additional staff people, and then there's also going to be some additional costs associated with, that are more, more line item costs, associated with the public education and outreach and the public involvement, those sorts of things. And so if we look to the next slide, from an operating cost standpoint, meeting all of those is really driven by salaries and benefits on two new additional staff people. And then we also have in here a portion of the city engineer's time, because he's gonna be involved in dealing with all of those permitting requirements that Angela mentioned.
Because he's not busy enough right now.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
And one of those staff members would be more of an engineering...
Like I said, some of that might be offloaded on the... Okay. He probably appreciates that.
That's one of the two positions, yeah, one would be O and M position under Paul, and then the other one is like an engineering tech-type position under Robert.
Yeah?
So, I'm not quite sure if this is the right point for this question, but one of the things that shocked me, well, this is probably for both of you, one of the things that shocked me when I moved to College Place was the whole, oh yeah, you just dump your leaves in the street, and then we come sweep them up, sometimes up to a month later.
Sometimes three or four months later.
Yeah, and so the catch basins are like packed, and I'm like, in the back of my head, I've been thinking, there's no way you're gonna be able to do that when you have a stormwater permit. And, I mean, the only way that you could do it that I could see is if they get swept up like really fast.
Right, on a schedule.
Yeah.
So there are...
So, are you looking at that? And that is gonna take a lot of public outreach.
Yeah, I haven't specifically dealt with that one, but in Pullman, we do the same thing, and they are under the MPDES base too, and they still have us put our leaves into the street to make them sweep them up, but yeah, then you have to maintain your catch basins more and just make sure that you're not getting...
Well, and you have...
Because I'm kinda wondering if it's gonna mean an even bigger hit on the O and M.
Potentially, I mean, you have identified in the capital plan for this two acquisitions that will be, I think, related to that. One is a vector for cleaning out those catch basins, and the other one is the street sweeper, so, so those, those will help with that.
How do you clean up your leaves, though? Is it with a front-end loader and a dump truck?
Sort of.
Sort of.
It's, it's, there's a bucket loader and, and a guy with a shovel.
Oh, okay, so I'll talk to Paul and maybe come up with some strategies that we can include in the plan.
Well, one of the things that I think we should really think about is, I mean, if we're gonna do, well, first off, if we're gonna have a utility without getting, you know, a lot of really angry people, we need to be starting to do some outreach right away. And one of the ways that we can make public involvement actually be real is, you know, talk about some options for that. I mean, one of the things that you can do instead of that is to give everybody the green bin, pick it up and have it composted. And, yes, on one hand, that potentially has a cost to it, but is that really a bigger cost than picking the leaves up off the street and leaving them sit there for three months until they're frozen under the snow, and then you can't park, and blah, 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 blah. So, you know, ask, giving people like various options and saying, okay, this is how the cost would lay out, and which way you think we should go, I think would really be helpful in getting people on board with this.
Some of the, you know, we have some leverage now with the unlimited pickup.
Exactly.
And, and we may want to consider doing things like paper bags for leaf disposal, and...
Well, Richland actually found when they, but they own their own landfill, but they actually found it paid them to give people the, the green bins and compost, because it, that way their landfill will last so much longer.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's, I think, we have a variety of options.
Right, and so I think this is one of those places where it really makes sense to do some, what I call, real public involvement, where we're actually trying to get them to give us, to help us make a decision, as opposed to, well, we've decided, you know, how mad are you gonna be?
We have a lot of expertise on how mad we're gonna be with garbage, so...
So maybe on a secondary, maybe on a Friday, we can come up with a public information session in the summer for the, for people, and maybe even in the middle of the day on a Saturday or something, if you want.
I'd suggest the farmers' market.
Yeah.
Yeah, farmers' market would be good.
Maybe, maybe do a brief presentation, this is all talk to...
Yeah, no, 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 it's, it's a, it's great.
Well, but it goes into...
It comes back to, yeah, part of it is what would they like from a whatever, but it does come back to what was the cost? it does come back to what was the cost of it.
And so I can make up some post-words and provide some information and that way they know the basis of why and what you can do and maybe some input.
Yeah, I think that would be great and, you know, maybe tie, trigger the, tie that with an online survey or things like that.
We can always try and put the business students to work again.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, so the remainder of the costs that are up here besides salary and benefits, we have, do have, the regulatory mandated programs wanted to cover the educational public outreach costs. And then the rest of these are the administrative costs and taxes. These are frankly pretty lean costs, but I do think they're realistic. We based it, again, we're creating a new utility. We don't know exactly what the administrative costs are going to be, but we based it on your water and wastewater utilities. So we think that these are realistic. We do have a small contingency on the total amount that we're putting into the revenue requirement because this is new. We don't know, we don't presume to know exactly what everything is. And when we're setting a revenue requirement, really our goal as, as rate consultants is to make sure that what we tell you is going to be a high enough rate to pay for everything is going to be a high enough rate to pay for anything. So I just want you to know, we do have a small contingency in that isn't exactly this cost that has been identified because we expect that things will come up, especially in that first year of, of operating. All right, with capital costs, so this is the total cash needs for capital projects that have been identified. That includes acquiring a vector, acquiring additional, additional street sweep, and then a number of, of actual projects that Angela has identified as needs to have. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna jump ahead too much, but so this is the total amount.
So is, is the 2020 amount the, a new vector and a new street sweeper, is that?
So the 2020 amount is a, is a new vector and a portion of a streets project.
Yeah.
It's what we anticipate the stormwater share of a streets project is going to be. And I can, we have a, I have a listing of all those if you'd like it, but I want to.
That's okay.
Yeah, all right, let's go to, so our rate recommendation. Here's the meat. So Angela did a detailed analysis of a statistically representative sample of your single family residential homes. Based on that, the average residential parcel has 3,500 square feet of impervious area. So that's how we define our equivalent service unit. From that, Angela also looked at, okay, everybody who's not a single family residential, how much impervious area are they going to have? Because we need to take that and divide it by that 3,500 to figure out how many, when we go and bill people, how much total, how many billing units are we going to have? Working with the revenue requirement and our billing units lets us know what does our rate need to be? Nine dollars and 18 cents a month. So that's for, every single family residential is going to pay that regardless of the exact amount that they happen to have on their parcel. The reason that we do that is measuring every single house and.
We'd have to hire two more people.
Yeah, no, we're not, it's, it's very onerous and is, has diminishing returns on the equity of it. For non-residential though, as I said, it is going to be based on the real measured amount for each one. And so they will be charged nine dollars and 18 cents per equivalent service unit per month. So if they have 7,000 square feet of impervious area, they would pay double that. The onsite mitigation credit, a maximum credit per ESU of $2.63. And as I said, that's based on that analysis that we did of what it, how much will costs go, could costs go down if everyone was mitigating to the maximum amount possible? And then we're also recommending that, so this is, that's for 2019, we're recommending that from there, from 2020 to 2024, which is sort of the period that we're looking at here, inflationary level rate increases just to keep pace. All of the major cost drivers that you have are, we would expect to in aggregate be going up at about 3% a year, so we're recommending that your rate would keep pace with that. Any questions on that before we move off? All right, next is, so what do you get for that $9.18? I want to, so that was, we, the $9.18 does not cover with cash from your rate payers the full capital cash needs. Covers your operating costs. In the first year, it covers funding that operating reserve. It's one time thing, once you've got it, then you're good. And it does provide some capital funding through the rate every year, but it doesn't meet the full cash need because we are with much discussion with staff and figuring out what is a reasonable rate to have. We are saying, click it once more, that the difference of what is generated by the rate and the full capital cash needs is going to need to be made up with grants. And so that's the message that we go back to ecology with and say, here's what we think is reasonable for the rate payers to cover, but if they're not going to come up with the full cash needs for all the capital, you need to come with some grants to make this happen or it's going to take longer for us to be able to do those things. Because it'll, we're generating some capital revenues, or some revenues for capital, but it would mean, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna push out to 2021 before we can do that project instead of getting to it right away.
I also want to add something to with our rates. I'm trying, we're trying to make sure that from an economic development nexus, we remain competitive with our neighbors because we're in the right now. Where it is low, as we're lower, I think we have some big wins coming ahead of us. If we jump the gun and overshoot and get a hub our neighbors, we could shoot ourselves in the foot as far as gains from the private sector. So even, so even though I know that there's a big gamble saying, hey, we're gonna make them give us grants, we're also trying to capture some of that additional property and sales and hotel tax should what we think is coming our way, come our way.
Well, and the other argument that I think is a very strong one is we are not asking them to give us grants and then we have a utility that doesn't pay the freight of being able to cover the replacement costs. So if we did not have that in there, then I think it would be pretty lame to say, yeah, we've got a utility that covers our operating costs, but every time we need capital, we're going to come to you for a grant. They'll see right through that, but.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like over the next six years, about a million and a half in.
Which is really not that much money.
Oh, it's, well, it's, yeah, a million here, a million there. You're talking money pretty soon.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, from the state side, that's really not that much money. For us, yeah, that's a lot, but.
Well, I think the, the work with the wells and the capital budget demonstrates how well we can do that.
Well, and I think between the economic development argument and the replacement argument, I think we've got a really strong argument for grants.
Yeah.
As you can see on the slide, what I'm, we're trying to make sure.
Yes.
It's pretty other than water.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is what we're staying conscious of when really getting to what is that reasonable level that shows, we're not just saying we're not going to do anything, but if, if we, if we wanted to fund the full amount, it'd be closer to $14.
So I have a question about the credits.
Yes.
What is the baseline for getting the credits? So is it like, are we going to be doing inventory in the early years and that's the baseline? And so is it better for some, and then what about these new construction places that are coming in? Is it better for them to build in less impervious surface from the beginning or is it better for them to have a higher baseline and then go correct it later?
So our general recommendation is that you make the credit available on an application basis, that you don't go out and say, we're gonna go with our staff that is, even with two staff.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And so what we tend to observe is that on new development, they're very keyed into it. For existing development, honestly, we don't see that many retroactively applying. Some do. Large facilities that have already made investments will come and, and, and apply for it. But we very rarely see someone going in, as you described, going in and putting in all pervious pavement if they weren't already planning on doing something just to get that credit.
And they still have to meet the DOE minimum requirements. So depending on the trip count, they have to do oil, metal, basic treatment. They have to detain the water for half to two years, return it by, and they have to convey them. And then they also have to size the pregnant amount from the site to the city system so that it can use that. So that would be your baseline.
Right.
Anything above and beyond that.
Okay, so the baseline isn't really impervious area, it's beyond requirement.
Yes.
Okay, that was, I was thinking it was impervious area and I was like, that's going to be really confusing. So, okay, I get it now, sorry.
So say if they kept all of their stormwater onsite and only 700 years ever went into the city system, they would get a credit back.
Yeah, that would probably be the level of getting to the full, full credit, which is still only $2.63 per equivalent service unit off of that $9.18 because they're still benefiting from all of the other programs that you are going to have to meet your requirements. All right, next slide here. So it's most of what I have for you, except that really, this is the meat, this is the meat. The next steps are really the meat of what we're thinking about, where this needs to go and what happens next. So rated options up there just because, you know, that, that needs to be there, but really there, at some point, you will have to adopt something with regards to a rate and it could be that, but we are not, at this point in the course of analysis, ready to have that be a final number for you or have all of the work that is necessary to flip a switch today. Because the real big hurdle for implementation is we need to get our full billing database of who all we're going to build, what it actually looks like. And once we have that, then we have an opportunity to go back and true up our rate analysis because the analysis that has been done so far still has some assumptions that are baked into it for where we are in the course of the study. And so there's, we're pretty confident in the number that we're presenting with you today, but we knew that you weren't going to vote on it, so we, there's, there's still some work to be done. The other piece, as we already started talking about, is outreach. And, you know, your point about making the outreach effective is very well received, that it, that isn't something that just happens at the, at the end of the process. If we can start doing that early, then that's always a positive. And then on our plate is eventually preparing a study report for you just to document all of this for the record. Any other questions?
This may be for staff more, but do we, is there some sort of process that we have to go through to create a utility?
Yes.
And what does that look like? Is there public hearings, et cetera?
I don't know on the public hearing, I haven't gotten into the detail of it, but we definitely have to adopt it by ordinance and set up a.
I will, I would, I would tell you we'll do a public process.
And same, same question for the ambulance fund, although it's, it has a, has its own bill, I assume it has.
They're specific, think you have to have a public hearing, you've got to show the cost of service, you've got to show what impacts it could have on everybody else and perform the process.
And, and both of these would require a co-vocation of a municipal co-chapter from I have served, so, yeah, we do have all our ordinance public hearing.
To do, to, to get there by July 1st is almost Hercu, Herculean.
Well, and which is.
I got it out.
Which is why my suggestion would be that you kind of push back on having the utility ready day one of the permit.
Yeah, it's just.
I have a meeting set up with my over in Olympia when I go over there for a couple weeks to fight for our other curb grant, so, yeah, we should be able to get that taken care of. She's been cooperating on other issues.
Yeah, I think so will be.
And, and we do have in our scope to help to prepare draft ordinance language for you. We've done this for many municipalities, so, yes. But yeah, are there any other things related to the analysis, additional scenarios that you would be interested in seeing or other questions that you may have?
The one, I kind of like the scenario the way it is now, but the one thing that I think would be helpful is to get an idea of if we don't get grants, how long would it take before we could do those capital projects?
Absolutely.
Because I think we are pretty close to our debt limits. I'm not sure new debt is really doable for us because what's left of our debt limits, we kind of need to hang on to in case of more emergency emergencies.
Yeah, and I mean, part of the, part of the objective of creating this utility as a standalone enterprise is that once it's established and is a going affair, it, you could potentially revenue bond against its revenues without hitting your other debt limits, so.
But that's.
But that's, that's further out, I'm just, a general reasoning. Yes, that we can absolutely prepare that scenario for you.
As a taxpayer myself, I like to limit the amount of interest we pay.
Absolutely.
Here, here.
Yeah.
So, and I think that would be really helpful when you're talking about grants, is to say, you know, yeah, we can do this in 15 years or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and because we, we are planning to have some amount of revenue generated for capital, it's not like we're not going to do it. It's just going to take some time. So that's, I think, a good piece, the negotiating strategy as well. Great. Well, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further items to discuss?
Where's everybody else?
You're serious?
Well, we.
I mean, I get my migraine shots tomorrow. Michael is clearly not in, in shape and we managed to show up.
We know, we, we know that, that Heather is, is off on a cruise to Alaska, Lauren is off in someplace strange. I don't know where March is this evening, she usually calls in.
Zero.
Really, I just have allergies, so I'm not really that bad off.
So we'll try, we'll try public embarrassment for the others that didn't bother.
Exactly. We need like a wall of.